Well, there's no Zoom tonight.
Yeah, it's weird.
We don't have a Zoom link.
Okay, well, here we go. Well, it's six o'clock on August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I'll call this meeting the Chelmsford Select Board to order. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, Town Manager bid awards.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two items for the board's confirmation this evening. The first one is for the senior center HVAC. There were two bids received on July twenty-seventh for this project, and we're seeking the confirmation for the lowest responsible and eligible bid, which was from Ambient Temperature Corporation in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, which falls within the project budget. And the good news of company this is where we have experience with this vendor at McCarthy and Parker School Rooftop Unit Replacement Project. So again, we're seeking the board's confirmation to award the bid contract for the Ambient Temperature Corporation eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And you see, the other bid was about thirty thousand over, so it gives us confidence that the bids were, you know, understanding of the nature of the work that's being requested there.
Any questions, comments? Take a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Town Manager's bid award for the senior center HVAC upgrades to Ambient Temperature Corporation in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Thank you. And then the second and final bid award is for the conservation of historic documents. This is a capital project from two thousand and twenty-three Spring Annual Town Meeting, and they requested to award the bid to Northeast Document Conservation Center in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Any comments?
What's the conditional contract?
The nature of the work is because it involves, it's an amount not to exceed, and that's the conditional thing, because it's archiving records, and sometimes there are unhidden or unforeseen work that's involved. And so that's why it has a conditional and not to exceed amount. But we have, we have experience for this. The budget was two seventy-five.
I forget it was, okay. Any other questions? Take a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Town Manager's bid award for the conservation of historic documents to Northeast Document Conservation Center in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Five zero. Okay, Town Manager, your voice.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Four weeks from tonight, on September eleventh, you'll be asked to sign the warrant for the Fall Annual Town Meeting, which is on, which is five weeks after that on October sixteenth. Tonight, I'm presenting you the first draft of the warrant. Right now, there appear to be roughly twenty-five warrant articles for Fall Town Meeting. Many of them at the beginning of the warrant are traditional warrant articles, you know, reports of committees, Cemetery Improvement Fund, Sewer Conservation Fund, and so forth. However, you know, there are some major items that will be there, which suggests that the town meeting would go perhaps two sessions at minimum. As we know, the schools are coming in to, for funding for the high school kitchen renovation. We also have placed an article placeholder for the strategic plan, which I know we'll discuss more at length at your next meeting, next Monday night. And then there's a citizen petition zoning bylaw to rezone a portion of the residential area on Littleton Road, next to Bertucci's, up by the quarry. And then, and then the planning board has a zoning article regarding adult social daycare. And then the town clerk has submitted, I guess, a zoning article, I'm sorry, a general bylaw amendment to specifically delineate the posting locations for town meeting warrants, because it is, it is not defined in the charter or the bylaws. So this would establish that, which is really the tradition we've used over the past. And then the other one is a charter amendment, which would reduce the number of signatures required for town meeting representatives. And then the energy, Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee has asked, at this point, to have a stake, to have a placeholder about bringing forth an article regarding the adoption of a specialized energy code, which is something you may recall, they, they were also looking at the Springtown Meeting, but pulled it. So again, there's, there's, there's still some movement, so I'll bring you a revised version next Monday. And then your following meeting in three weeks, the Monday after Labor Day, you'll be signing the warrant on the eleventh. And then the Finance Committee will begin their hearings that following Thursday, September fourteenth. And then we'll meet the fourteenth, the twenty-first, and the twenty-eighth to wrap up their work, so they can get the book out to the printers by the first of October for the October sixteenth Fall Annual Town Meeting. So, go ahead.
So I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
On Article Six about the opioid settlement of payment funds, is that going to be impacted at all by this new ruling that the judge made about the bankruptcy?
Yeah, we don't know. What, what I've asked the treasurer, John Souzer, our finance director, is what funds are we scheduled to receive? And right now, we, we have, we've not received anything for, since July one, because of the new fiscal year. But we were, we are scheduled to receive a twenty-seven thousand dollar payment. And then there were, then there were a bunch of non-related to that new payments that were, that were due in July to the state, and that was for CVS, Walmart, Timmer, and so forth. And we, we have the amount, so again, that, we don't know the dollar amounts at this time. And again, because of the action on the settlement, you know, with, with the Sandler family?
Exactly.
Sackler family, yeah.
It's just indemnification.
It's, it's not sure, it's not sure if that will hold it up, but there's already been a payment, you know, so we'll see. And yeah, as you know, we're kept up to date pretty aggressively by the attorneys that are handling that case, so. But we do have as a placeholder, and, you know, if, if not, then we'll come back and revisit it at Springtown Meeting.
Okay. Article seven, the, the Cooley's property?
Yep.
Was any of that property under Chapter?
No.
Sixty-one, it wasn't?
It was not.
Okay, and I just want to, in the interest of full disclosure, Article Eight refers to property that my sister and I jointly own, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, that's a, that's a parcel of land next to the Cranbury Bog that's very similar to one we did in the Springtown Meeting, you know, the one that was next to Stony Brook, in terms of size and, and dollar amount, you know, its appraised value and so forth.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, no other questions? Yes, we're to the Select Board and Town Manager FY twenty-four goals. Do you want to take a position by the easel, and we can start to, you know, just take comments, suggestions, and so forth? So we can get them documented and start working through it.
And there's a microphone above you there, so if you need to add something there, and you don't have to like run back to the mic. It should be working right above your head, if it's working.
Get some good colors.
Good colors.
Colors that'll burn.
It's FY twenty-four, right?
Mm-hmm.
There was nothing in it. No, I, I. Would you like it? You can't have it.
No, I'm sorry, you guys have it.
I'm gonna go with just the blanks.
Maybe, maybe I'm getting it nice.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I guess the floor is open for comments and suggestions and for goals, so.
I mean, one that, that kind of carries over from, one that we had from fiscal twenty-three is the ARPA funding, and I know it is getting close to when we do need to finalize the last of those funds, and I think that should be something that we should do by the end of fiscal twenty-four. That gives us six months, we wait.
I had that one as both the continued management of the existing funds and the allocation of the remaining.
So it'd be kind of like, to me, it'd be the overall ARPA with two, two sub-goals. One is that all allocation needs to be completed by, I think?
End of next year.
End of next year, twenty twenty-four. We can have it for a fiscal.
Sure.
Yep.
You know, and, and then the second one will be the ongoing management and further allocation.
The allocation of existing?
Complete, full al, I'd say.
Of the balance.
Complete allocation of the balance, yeah. And then continue to monitor projects.
Monitor.
Pro, yeah, sorry. Monitor ongoing ARPA projects.
Ongoing projects, just like we've been getting the monthly reports. That's what these referring to.
Okay.
Do you want to set dates for those?
No, let's just, let's get them up there and.
I think that pending the outcome of town meeting, the strategic plan is going to be a major goal for us next year.
Yep, I got it down too. Hey, that's really going to be based on town meeting, so it's going to really be dependent on that, how they vote.
The decision will be based on that, but we have a lot of work to do to define what we want to acquire in the process and then to get it executed, get the planning process executed.
Okay, help me with that, between now and October sixteenth? Because if town meeting comes back and shoots it down.
Between now and October sixteenth, or actually between now and probably September, we need to define what we're presenting.
Right, 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 okay, I get that part, okay, that's what I was thinking too.
I mean, do we need to define what we're presenting before town meeting?
Yes, because Finance Committee is going to want to make a recommend, recommendation.
Town meeting has to know what they're voting on.
Voting on, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying end of, end by the end of the year.
No.
I was thinking, no, before town meeting, yes.
The end of, by the, well, and then for the remainder of the fiscal year, depending on how long that process will take to actually acquire a contractor to help us with it and execute that planning process, that's going to be a major focus of ours in the next fiscal year, assuming town meeting says yes.
Yeah, might be something like execute plan as approved at town meeting, and then once we have one, we could start to add sub-bullets if we want to at that point, to put some more specific dates in it, because we don't really know what it's going to be now. That's my opinion, anyway. So probably clarify warrant article.
Define, define scope.
Yeah, scope, yeah, okay, for warrant article.
Yeah, define scope.
Define the scope for the warrant article.
obtain funding.
And then it's finalize the RFP.
Yeah.
Right? And then it's get the process going with whoever we choose to award it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, I've got something on the sewer. So I'm looking at, you know, the inflow reductions. I'd like to find out where we end up with that. So on sewer, sewer system, inflow reductions, I would like to understand as the, the bank starts to open its door, so to speak, and start to bank some capacity. And then I'd also like to know under that is how much reserve should be held. So those are three things in my mind. And then the last one is what the MWRA options might be.
Okay, so, under sewer, you want to?
Does that make sense to people, or?
It, it does. I was thinking about the same thing in my mind. It was we, we laid out this year, we said, what are our near term, midterm, and long term? And I think what you're doing is saying, let's keep tracking
Yeah.
those mid and long terms that are still active.
Yeah, so inflow.
And in the near term, let's understand the numbers of what we've got.
Right. So inflow reduction is great, that's perfect. The bank, I'd like to continue to monitor any capacity that's being banked, because I want to see how that's working.
We don't have much of that.
Bank capacity?
Well, not yet, there's just a little bit, but it could, it could come out of this, and I think we should kind of understand how that's working.
And then the MWRA?
MWA, MWRA option?
That was on my list also.
There were, there were two things, well, there was the MWRA, and then Paul had also started to try to work with the legislators and at NIMCOG and Middlesex Three. So I think kind of that, what do we call that group of people? They're like, they're other influencers, right?
Regional?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Regional stakeholders and influencers.
Yeah.
Yeah, because one of the things I actually talked to Paul, and I don't know how to put this down there, but there's a certain amount of waste that is being trucked into Duck Island and dropped there. And I'm wondering how much that is of the total capacity that goes in there? Is it two percent, five percent? And could that be diverted out of there right now? You know, so those are questions that I have.
Networking in regard to the sewer?
It's, it's a little more than networking, it's the regional stakeholders and decision makers.
So regional?
Regional.
Just write it that way.
Just write regional.
Collaboration? Conversa, regional, not regional.
Collaboration or the big stick.
Conversation?
Influencers on their, regional.
Regional contacts?
Just put regional, we'll, we'll get there.
Regional conversations?
Just capture the idea.
Yeah, yeah.
How many other towns are using Duck Island?
Sure.
Tingsborough, Lowell, Tucksbury, Drake, and Chelmsford is fine.
Yep.
That works.
The other question I have is, do we want to put down something for reserve?
Right, that, we had reserve capacity.
Oh, you did, oh, you got that, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
So, and before we leave sewer, so Paul, there was the, was, in the long term, you had discussed the Weston and Sampson Pump Station Enforce Main Assessment. There's, is there a next phase to that that we need to track?
Yeah, that's, I guess that's under sewer, yeah, it's, yes.
Yep.
It's infiltration, infiltration, I guess is the best way.
Infiltration?
Yeah, which is, kind of like the inflow reduction, but it's a different one.
But there's two pieces, like, one is, one is, one is what we're managing in the town, and the other is this major effort.
Main, yeah, that's for the mains, the other one is for residential.
Right.
Two different things. So you could put it under that and say residential and, you know, town mains. You could put it under that, sub-bullets if you wanted to. Yeah, under inflow reductions, if you want to, or just put it separate, either way.
Yeah, just inflow residential and inflow town mains.
Exactly, yep.
Because they're not really related.
No, they're not.
Should we, could we consider doing a regional, like with another, you know, building, another small one, like with Tingsborough or?
Yeah, just take time, that, that would take a lot of time and permitting, that's.
Yeah, what's wrong with the MWA, WR, A though?
Exactly.
Well, you could, what you could do, George, is say MWA slash longer, long-term options. And so you could put that under that if you want to.
I think it's a pretty good idea, because I mean, they need it.
It's a regional option.
Yeah, MWRA slash long-term.
Long-term.
Long-term options.
No, it's not.
Just put long-term over the top.
We'll know what it means.
Yeah. And, and just so you know, reserve capacity, to me, that's, one is the bank. The other one that I think that we should have is just a reserve capacity that we hold to make sure we don't go over the limits. That's what I'm talking about, because right now, Paul, we all know that we're already tracking over the limits for the year because of the significant rainfall, so we know there's inflow. And, but the real question is, is as we start to build, let's say we do start to build reductions, should we have a certain amount that we hold for fluctuations? And one of the things I had said at the tri-board meeting last year was that you need to normalize the data against rainfall. And once you kind of understand what the rainfall fluctuations are, you can have an idea as to what the reserve should be in the real world. And, you know, so that, we can leave it written that way, but that, it's kind of two different things. For me, it's the bank, and the other one is what the town should have for reserve.
Paul, would there be anything as part of sewer? Like, we had some major capital expenditures last year. Is there anything in terms of the infrastructure maintenance or, that should be captured under here?
Yes, I mean, that, that will be under the capital plan, but we can list it there in terms of, you know, the pump stations and so forth.
And just the, the basic infrastructure maintenance?
Infrastructure expenditure? Is that what we're talking about?
I would call it maintenance.
Yeah, infrastructure, capital investments, or something.
Yeah.
You know, the thing they used to have, the plant they used to have at the high school, Paul? I know it's probably not, you know, it's probably a state, you know, but, I mean, it could be brought back? And if it could be, could you take like the three schools and, and put it into there? No, not big enough?
I don't think they let us do it.
It feels like a spelling test.
I don't think we could do it, George.
I just want to, because I know that, because I know my dad used to run that for the.
Before you leave that?
Because the standards are.
Pardon?
It would, it would basically, you'd have to redo it from scratch, and I'm not sure if they'd let us.
Yeah, but if it's an, if it's an option, if we could take even, I don't know how much the schools use. I mean, maybe it's a small amount, and maybe it isn't, I don't know. But if you took the three schools together, and you could have a little plant there, you know, you may, I don't know. I'm just thinking about, I don't know what the numbers are, but, you know, you get the Harrington and the Parker and that.
And the high school, yeah.
And it'd be pretty easy, you know, to, to join them.
And you're not that far from McCarthy either, if you had to.
Right, you know what I mean? So, I mean, that could be, you know, I, I don't know.
Okay, something we can look at.
Could we just, could we just add a third bullet under the strategic plan that says execute? Because we're not going to stop this year at an RFP. Thank you.
Can you flip it?
Yeah, or you can stick it up on the TV or on the walls.
Let's stick it where, where were you saying for Jay, on the TV?
Like, we stick it on the TV, nobody's using that right now.
I really do feel like Ben White, somewhat less graceful right now, I'm not going to lie.
It's good practice for me.
On the TV?
Yeah, just stick it over in the side with that, we have room to start, yeah, that's good.
Beautiful. Can I do an easy one? Policy on lighting, as I promised.
Lighting policy?
For town buildings?
Yeah.
In common.
You want to put in different lights, you mean, different types of lights or?
For common and town buildings?
Yeah, for, for, you could say, yeah, you want to say common and buildings? It's, anybody want to go broader, like properties or?
It's just municipal property.
But you, you're talking about lightings that have significance, right? Like, you, you don't mean just, just to light them up, you mean like have them.
This was for the monuments specifically.
Yeah, right, but I didn't know if it should go beyond that, that's all. Because if all of a sudden somebody changes a light in the, you know, the entranceway to the town hall, is that a problem? You know, and so what I'm saying is that we should probably have something that.
I thought there was already a policy for buildings, no?
I don't know, I never saw.
There is for brightness, but there isn't for anything.
Yeah, just for, not color, just nits.
Yep.
Just say municipal property for now, when we can get into it, when we get into it.
So if, if we're talking about policies, I have a, a policy proposal
Good.
for performance reviews for the Town Manager and Town Accountant.
I got it right yet, too.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think we need to have a, a set.
A major overhaul.
Yeah, policy and process for that.
Did you say process, Pat?
Process, I said that.
My god.
Why do I never say that word?
My heart.
Um, for Town Manager.
And Tom Collins.
Yep.
Um, do you want me to write process and procedure?
We'll, we'll know what you mean.
Yeah, that's good.
Just whatever we need.
Yep.
Policy, procedure, pol, uh, process.
Writing really is not.
I'll be above.
Thank you.
Are you sorry that you chose me now?
No, it's much better, much better than that.
Okay.
Well, if you want to keep going with the process word, I think, so we had a goal last year on process improvement, and I think we had a couple of really good things that came out of it. I would like to see us repeat that goal and see if we can get wider participation from the departments, because I think there's probably a lot more opportunity than what we tapped into last year.
I agree, but.
You okay with that, Paul?
Yeah, I just, yeah.
That's the one that's going to be okay with it.
Well, he's smiling.
No, he's going to think what they are, but yeah, okay, yeah.
I didn't say it.
Process, process improvement.
Like a fast.
Town departments, we'll know what it means, we can come back and wordsmith later.
Pretty much the goal ten from last year, the process improvement.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You can say departmental or whatever, if you wanted to, I suppose. Is that how we worded it last time? You didn't bring it up.
Um, yeah, we said process improvement, departmental, performance, performance, yeah.
I've got another one, and this is something I've talked to Paul about, but I, I don't even know if this makes any sense, so I'll just. But what I find is that the communication that comes out from the town, especially Paul's office, DPW, maybe other departments as well, but those two in particular, you know, you have police that comes out. I just wonder if it would make sense if there was some way where we could make that a single stream of communication that comes out, because it looks like it's coming from all these different places, which, which it is. But I'm looking at it from the residential, resident side. And in order to make sure you're getting everything, you kind of have to go to every one of those sites, if you will, or those pages, and you have to make it, you know, come out on top or whatever in order to actually get that. And I thought that if there was some way where it would be seamless for you guys, so in other words, you could still generate the same information you always did, but have it come out into social media in one stream, one flow. So whether it's DPW, and they could have their own template, you know, for their own identification, or it could be town office. I just don't know if that's possible, but that's one thing, you know, when I see a lot of the comments that we, we've just talked about earlier today, coming out on social media, I just wonder if that might help. And I'm not saying maybe somebody has better ideas, but I'm just trying to figure out how we could improve that, because I think the communication is around, but I just don't think it's getting to people.
Well, it's not coming from us, which is where it should be coming from.
Well, and, and the issue is, you're never going to, you're never going to get to everybody, and I think that we've tried to do this before. I think, you know, every other year, we have communication as one of our goals. I mean, it's, it's good to, to make the effort, but, you know, I, I don't know how you consolidate all that.
Well, I don't either, and I'm just wondering if we should look at it.
So I've talked to Paul about the town website, but I don't, I think it's an IT issue.
More social media.
So a lot of, well, no, I know, but a lot of, a lot of websites have the capacity to where you post something on your website, it flows automatically to social media.
Ours does that. Yes, it does.
Oh, it does, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah, it does. That's exactly how it works.
Yeah, that's, that's exact, and I'm wondering if ours should all be coming through that, so that there's one place that you know it's coming out of all the time. And it might make it, I, I don't know, I'm looking at it from the, the user standpoint, would they see everything better? Would, would it help to answer a lot of questions? If you kept, because I start, keep seeing things that it's clear to me, people don't know, because this information already coming out.
Can I just try to say what you're saying to make sure I understand it? So if I'm, the town website, we've been through this a million times, there's not a whole lot more we can do with that.
No.
It's, it's set up so that if there's a news flash, it goes to social media. But what you're saying is, I, and maybe this isn't what you're saying, but if I want to follow what's happening in the town on social media, I have to follow the DPW, I have to follow the Board of Health, I have to follow each individual microcosm, each department. And so what you're saying is, is there a way to follow the town at Chelmsford?
And get it all.
And it all just comes out? So people, so if somebody cares about it, they're not missing it because they miss following a certain department?
I have to follow this, I have to do that, I'm trying to figure out a way to make it easier.
But, but, and part of, well, I also think too, that's, this has nothing to do with the social media part, but I think that's too what we are trying to at least accomplish with the Town Manager's newsletter, is to get everything in, once a month, get every, all the major stuff in one place.
And I guess, I would say, if, you know, we have those notifications, and I don't know how, you know, widespread that's used or whatever, or what that can, can, you know, net be narrowed down to. But I think if everything were to go to, kind of like what, what you seem to be talking, people are going to be inundated with stuff they don't care about, and then you lose them.
So, so like a Lisa Mar, Business Development does a ribbon cutting, that's going to go through, and then that's.
I'm not suggesting that that stuff goes through it.
But, but that's the town.
Yeah, but I'm not suggesting everything. Yeah, but I'm not suggesting everything. I'm suggesting just the key pieces. DPW's definitely one of them. And police is another. Yep, police is another and health might be another. Higher health.
Fire.
Maybe that's enough. I, you know, I don't know, but I do know that those are the important ones that I tend to see questions about. Could be for trash pickup, that comes out of DPW. You know, could be, you know, when road closures come up, it's either DPW or the police.
I, I think, I think we should capture it as the idea, cause we're, this is brainstorming.
And if we.
When we, when we come back for priorities, my only concern would be, is, is that where we want our energy? If it's just, if it's this.
Get administrative.
It's an administrative thing.
You know, it's kind of, you know. Well, I, you know what, I'd, I'd like to make it where it's not a lot of energy, where it's just, if it's done in a way that I think about, um, if you're already generating the information, then it's just a stream to get it out. It's just the way we send it out, that's all. But, but you're clear, you don't like, you don't want the library. No. No, no, cause I'm not, and I'm not.
Why not?
And I'm not, see, but I'm not trying to denigrate. Not necessarily, is what I'm saying.
Exactly. Pat's, Pat's view is why is that, who's to say what's more important?
I, I didn't say that you couldn't. I just, first I heard complaints about Lisa Maroni's emails going, that's not what I have in mind. But if it's library, if you wanna add that, but then are you inundating people? You know, so that's what I'm wondering, because what I, what I see, it's all the, it's the road closures, it's the road work, it's the projects, it's the trash pickup, it's the. So we just have it for health and safety? Police stuff, it's the health stuff. Health, safety, public works.
But you kinda have that.
At a minimum.
You kinda, you kinda have that base, you know, I, I see that pretty regularly, pretty consistently on the front page and the newsletters.
But when they, when they hit social media, they're all distinct, is what Mark's saying. The police department sends out like North Road closure, Old West Street closure, and then. Like if I come, if I put yours, so I see it on top first, but I don't join all the other ones and do all that too, then guess what? I don't, I don't see it sometimes. It gets by me. So I, I'm trying to look at it from the resident's standpoint and would it help them to be better informed with this information that you already generate and just selectively, which things will go through that? That, that's all I was thinking about. And if people feel differently, I'm okay with that.
You, you, this is brainstorming, so you should capture it.
Yep.
Communications consolidation.
Social media is really the.
Well, not really.
Communications. It's.
It's communications. It's, it's municipal communications, yeah.
A lot of people aren't on social media.
Right.
Right. Yeah, that's the.
That's why we did the town manager newsletter.
Right, and that's what's good about that, is at least that newsletter exists, but that comes out once a month. A lot happens in thirty days. Right. In town, you know. But even then, there's a library newsletter. There's a flood over here, there's a, there's a road closure. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there are different newsletters too. There's a library newsletter, senior center newsletter. And I think that's what Mark's getting at, is do we sort of.
Consolidation or the flow.
CCA does, CCA does their thing. I didn't even wanna touch that one. Right, with town elections, I mean, it's all social.
So one, I have this kind of, kind of related to communication, but I guess not really. It's related to the website. When can we get rid of townofchelmsford.us?
Yeah. What, the domain? The domain.
Just move everything over to chelmsfordma.gov. It's not. Documents are not. Documents, you have to go to townofchelmsford.us. And.
Is there a reason for that? Just some legacy issue or? Could be legacy issues.
The web, the website's still dot us and some carries.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, they never changed the website.
And it's been, it's been years since we've converted over and somebody said, well, it would be so much work to convert all those documents over to, to chelmsfordma.gov. And I can't imagine it would be that intensive. I mean, there should be an easy way to do that. I mean, look at it, look at an agenda or minutes and they show up town, you know.
Is it townofchelmsford.us?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know, I wasn't gonna touch the town website. I touched that dark rail the first year.
We had a goal that we fell behind on, that we didn't do this year with the Parks and Recreation. Do we wanna try to do something with that this coming year? I think it would still be a useful thing to have, even though it didn't make the priority.
Parks and Recreation.
Yep.
I suppose we have to follow our PFAS situation.
What was the Parks and Recreation goal? Did you wanna elaborate?
So we, it's, it's the same goal that we had this year, we just didn't finish it. It was to look at, um, I don't remember the exact wordings, but to look at getting the information about Parks and Recreation in Chelmsford, like in one place on the website, for example, where people could just go.
Yeah, it was kinda like a directory.
Yeah, like a directory.
Everything we had and, so it would be a place stuff.
And weren't we also, I, I guess it's related to that, gonna up, gonna update the open space, um, plan.
See, Pat, would you?
The open space plan, we were gonna update the open space.
Yeah, that was all related to this too, I think.
You mean the conservation open space or recreation plan?
Well, whoever, is that who owns it?
The conservation.
Oh, okay.
I think, Paul, your thought was that that had to be updated and so that could all kinda feed this effort.
Have we ever put.
Can you capture the, the, um, update open space plan?
No.
It's a sub-bullet to that, I think. Is that a sub-bullet?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I had that too, but I didn't think.
I mean, I still have things that I think we should keep doing.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, well, Richardson Road, I mean.
Road, road and sidewalk infrastructure is still a priority.
We're gonna be doing those forever.
Yeah, I mean, that's gonna, we, at least we have a plan already.
Right.
Now we have something, we can, you know, have the town come in, kinda show us what their updates are and, you know, period. We can do that quarterly anyway.
It's brainstorming, let's capture it. Road and sidewalk infrastructure.
So Richardson Road is one for me.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we had that under, we did.
It's a separate bullet.
Yeah, we had a bunch of tracking and support.
Oh, why, yeah, it's a separate one.
Sorry.
Just cross that out and make a new one.
PFAS, yeah, PFAS.
PFAS.
Yeah, a lot of people say, what, what are you doing with Richardson Road? Yeah. You say fifty-four. Monitoring filtration. How about that?
Well, I think that includes, I mean, that's what it means.
It's the whole issue.
Right, that's what it means. I don't think you need to buy down anything there.
Yeah. It's, it's huge.
Fifty-four.
That's enough.
That's enough.
I almost didn't even wanna say that.
Um, if you're on those items that we're tracking and support, I think we still have the fire station.
Right.
Committee and tracking and support and the Warren poll, those were the three I carried over.
I'm sorry, ju- ju-.
Fire, the fire, fire station, study, support or tracking, whatever.
Fire station, projects or support?
It's the study.
Study. Study project, yeah.
And what was the other one?
Um, the Warren poll.
Is it P O?
H L, H L.
H L?
H L.
Is there either?
No. What do we have left on Warren poll? Conservation restriction. That car, that's, that's coming up with your next meeting. Yeah, that was, I was gonna say, that's kinda. Warren poll, C R.
It's gonna carry on.
Cause we're already here, so we gotta.
How about traffic situations, like traffic stops, traffic lights?
And truck traffic.
I mean, that's another, that's what's gonna be forever too, I mean.
It is.
Well, at least, like, you know, I, I've been screaming about Richardson Road for ten years now, you know, and then I end up getting in the accident, but. I mean, that's, that's a dangerous, dangerous spot there, you know, when a kid, and you got three schools up that road, you know, and you got other buses and the kids and the morning and then the afternoon at that time, I mean.
If you wanna call it traffic calming, or I don't know what the right word would be, traffic.
Issue monitoring.
Major, major traffic issues and truck, and truck traffic. And I, I agree, it's gonna be ongoing. I still think some of the things are still intense enough that we can't lose lock on it.
Yeah, can you write major there with traffic issues? Cause I think that's important.
Right.
It's not like we're gonna, you know, look at every little thing, cause that's ridiculous.
Like truck traffic.
Truck traffic.
Intersection, intersection, safety, safety, that's a good way to put it.
Safety concerns.
I like that.
Yeah. Cause that's what we should be doing. But do we add Ledro to that list or?
Well, is that part of truck?
It would kinda fall under both of those, right? Yeah.
Can I, can I add something actually? Kind of going back to the sidewalk infrastructure, um, I know, I've had some conversation with Paul about some of the grants.
Oh, oh, sorry. We're out of, we're out of paper.
There's more, there's a whole other part behind us. Don't you worry, we're just gonna keep going, guys.
Lloyd said we're gonna be done with sixty-four.
Sorry, George. I'm just gonna add one, just the one, I promise. Um, so Paul and I have had some conversation where I've had a lot of questions about what grants we're utilizing from various state, from the state and from the federal government and from wherever, all of them. So I was wondering if we could work on kind of, um, documenting that somehow, what we're utilizing so that, cause I know like the DPW, like Christine is doing, probably most of them are going through her, through the DPW.
Yeah.
Cause that's just the nature of it, right? But then, you know, the school has grants and stuff that they're applying for. We don't have one person who, who manages all of that, but I'm wondering if we can kind of consolidate that so that people can understand which grants we're already utilizing and which ones might still be available to us. If people are in town are looking to do specific projects or they're wondering if there's ways to fund certain things in town.
What people.
Well, you know, like I had a resident contact me about a sidewalk, somewhere she thinks there should be a sidewalk. So, you know, I went to Paul and said, well, what do we have? Do we have grants? Do we have, I know it's not on the list from the DPW, it's not slated to be done. You know, so it was just, it was difficult for me to figure out what grants we're already utilizing. Like if I wanted to go online and look up grants and, you know, talk to this woman about grants that might be a possibility, it's hard to find out which ones we're already utilizing because they're kinda being managed by a bunch of different people. Like Paul is applying for some, Christine is applying for some, um.
Shouldn't the grants though be coming into the town and that specific situation become a listed priority someplace? Where it, wherever it does fall within the town's requirements?
Yeah, but then there's new, but then there's ongoing grants, right, that are like every, that are every year, so those ones are.
Yeah, so you're just wondering which ones that we're involved in versus which ones might not be.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering if we could.
If we're missing out on something.
Work on maintaining a list of some sort or some sort of system of kind of tracking all the grants that the town is, is either utilizing.
You, you've report, you've reported in the past on like, here's the grants that we've gotten this year.
Yeah, yeah.
So if, I mean, if I pull the thread a little bit, Aaron, I, my question, my, my question, no, but my, so my question would be, it's good information. We don't wanna create work to create work, so it's like, to what end is this help Paul and his staff work better?
Yeah, that's why I come back to.
That's why.
The requirement, you're talking about a sidewalk, so to me.
Right.
That should get filtered in to the general plan. You know, the overall road and sidewalk plan, it should be prioritized within it.
Through Christine.
Yes.
Yes.
So then that person would go through Christine and ask, and Christine would be the person that's in charge of understanding. But this is my, my thing, is that Christine isn't the person that's in charge of understanding what grants are available for sidewalks. But what if somebody wants to do something else entirely? I don't know who the person is.
Reese did a lot of grants, too.
Is it Paul? You know, if somebody wants to investigate a project that isn't related to infrastructure, um, I don't know.
It, it would still go in through one of Paul's departments.
Yeah.
Where they have the expertise to know what the funding vehicles would be, whether it's town money, grant money.
And, and I think most of them.
We don't have a person to send, we don't have like a procurement person.
Yeah, but I don't think we, and I don't think we can afford to set one up, quite frankly, either. And, and I think most of the department has a, a good about, I mean, it seems to be that they feel like that's part of their job is to be aware of what grants might be available and, and how, you know, if there's a possibility that we might get something if they apply for them. Um, I, I think they're generally very good about that.
Yeah, I mean, a project gets funded on its merits, not based on its availability for grants. And I think that's kinda what we're getting at is, if, like, we have complete streets, we have municipal vulnerability grants, we have chapter ninety monies.
Mass works.
Mass works and so forth. And, and rather than sort of assigning it to a particular grant thing, it's more like, what do we wanna do? And then we decide. Prioritize. We, we, what are the funding vehicles for it?
Are there new, like, are there new grants that come out everywhere?
They do, I mean, particularly some of the.
Is it just you target things?
Well, myself and, and, you know, we get a lot of it from our legislative delegation, whether it's Laurie Trahan's office or, or, you know, state delegation. We got for Biim, for sidewalks at Biim. We got that specifically for that area. Right. But a lot of it just comes through, either comes to us through the MMA or comes to us through, through our legislative delegation and or through our congressional delegation, in terms of what grants are out there, or the state, yeah. Usually comes to, oh, I mean, they often get them as well. I mean, for example, even something unrelated to this, like bulletproof grants, vest grants for police. I'll get it, but also Colin, Chief Spence will get it as well. And the same thing, if I'm on the distribution list for the complete streets grants, Christine gets it as well, but we make sure that we both know that we've got it. So we don't assume anybody, we don't assume that somebody receives it. And then, and then like I said, we then sort of pursue what, what is it that's viable on that, from that source. But the bigger question is, is what we wanna do with, under the programs is pretty broad. And therefore it comes a question of, well, what are the priorities? And that's where the sidewalk thing came in, is, yeah, you have a great idea, but, you know, I'm sorry, we're not, the sidewalk from Concord. Sidewalk from Concord Road to the Carlisle Line is not, is not.
Even if it were, even if we were to get additional grant money, there's other things.
Even if we're eligible, we probably would've said, no, we'll, we'll use that one over at the, at the high school or, you know, at, you know, Biim and so forth. Right, and if that's on the plan and we think it's a great candidate to shoot in, you know, then we can, that's kinda what happened this last time. That's how we ended up getting that grant money.
Yeah, it just seems like a, it's hard to.
It is.
Like Paul has to send me a list of all the grants that we're, that we're utilizing, you know, just like a manual list. So it's just hard to know what the town's kind of utilizing to get that information in one spot.
Some are recurring and then some are new, and that, that's the challenge. Yeah, I think the most important thing is that information, if it's new information regarding a street or a sidewalk, et cetera, that make sure it gets into Christine so that it gets on the plan.
Yeah.
And then priority sets where it falls. And then when grants come in, we, there might be one that's lower, that's a great candidate.
Yeah.
And we can pull it out.
I'm thinking more about like the application processes than when they come in, where they, where they go. I understand they're managing where they go when they come in.
Yep.
So I'd like to, um, um, provide more support to the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. When we first set them up, we had, we had said we might do some public input sessions with them to, um, to, you know, enhance their outreach and, and sustain their efforts, the sustainability, um, efforts. You know, I think we, we probably should do that. I, I, you know, the, I think whatever we can do to help them, um, get the word out more and let the, the residents know what options there are to, to help the environment, to help the sustainability of the, of the world, basically. Even minor things that, that can, that can help. And, and I, you know, I think it's hard for them to, to get, you know, they go to the Earth Day Fair and things like that. But I think if we could do something wider than that, and I'm not sure exactly what it is at this point, maybe even some kind of regional.
Yeah.
Event.
Even like just more communication around the grant that we're getting to do the buildings, to do the, you know, the plan for the buildings.
So I, Pat, I also, I had that written down and then I kinda scribbled some other questions to myself. Are there any other board or committee efforts that warrant extra support or attention this year? Are there any other board or committee efforts that warrant extra support or attention this year? And I, I didn't really, I mean, I think most of the ones I came up with are either already in process or they're under like another board's purview. So I, I answered myself, no, but I had kind of a general comment that we should maybe, in, in following up with what we did with civic engagement, maybe somehow like reach out and remind the boards they're welcome to come, talk to us at any time or update us, or, I don't know that that's as an objective as more as it is working it into our annual calendar. But I, I, you know, I, I, and one, like, we talked about having another civic night, like you, you know. So I don't know if that's part of these objectives or if it's something that we just put on our calendar to, to.
I think it's on the calendar.
To do again.
But I think we need to do them, you know.
Yeah.
I actually wanted to suggest we do like a, an annual.
Yeah.
Like a municipal, kind of like what we did.
Right, I, yeah, right.
But maybe even on a, like a bigger scale, actually.
But I don't think that needs to be the goal, I know, I think that, like you said, we just add that to our calendar.
To the calendar, okay.
Make it be a regular.
Yep.
Well, I mean, I think it would be a goal, though, if you, I mean, depending how big you want to make it, I think we could make it like a bigger thing once a year and get the committees there and get more people there. And then it would be a bigger deal, I mean.
I guess it depends what you want the goal of that to be. I mean, if you just want it to be the visibility of those committees, that's one thing, but that one was kind of to try to get people interested in, in applying, too, for the, for the committees.
And the timing was like after the elections, so I think if it's on the calendar, we, a- after every election, Paul and the chair usually work together to put together the meeting calendar of when things are going to happen in the next fiscal year. And I, I think, Pat, what you're saying is if we put it on the calendar, then we won't drop it, and then we can decide how big we want to make it.
Right, right, how we, how we're going to set it up, sure, like, yeah.
Rather than a goal to report against.
Do we want to have that as a goal, or it's already on there?
No, no, I think what we're saying is, it's, it'll be on the calendar, so we'll, we'll work it that way.
And, and Virginia, I guess, you know, kind of in, in response to, if you said that, you know, if, if there are other committees that maybe could use some support, another that's a fairly new committee is the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, and I know they do a lot of events, and they, they, sometimes they express frustration that they don't have a, a good attendance here, but I think it's because they are new.
Well, like, I have the same comment coming from like the Age Friendly and the Council on Aging Board, where they would like to, at some of their major events, have more presence. And so what, when I was talking to myself about this, I said, well, maybe that's more my responsibility as a liaison to bring that forward and help get attention on it rather than making it a formal goal. Because I think it's our responsibility to support all the boards and the committees, I think.
So maybe that is.
Clean energy is kind of a newer thing.
Right.
And, and their, their challenges are, are maybe different.
Right, yeah, I think clean energy is in a different, different category.
So I don't have a problem with that one, but that's why I was sort of talking myself out of other ones. Paul, Paul, you look like, I'm sorry.
I, I see this as an offshoot from what we did last year with the questionnaire and all that, because, I mean, like, we were just talking about it, September eleventh, I've got the recycling group coming in.
Yeah.
Because they wanted to do a pitch, and this all came out of last year's.
And being.
You, you know, and so we all have to work with our liaison teams to see who wants to get in. You know, I reached out with emails and so forth, and.
Yeah.
You know, active groups jump forward, and, and what I also found, to your point, is that as the liaison, I help them as to when to do it, because I know they have an event coming up for their Zero Waste Day, and they have certain events, and I said, it might be good to do it then, and maybe we can get the word out and so forth. So things like that make a lot of sense to me to, as to, you know, how to get that out when they're having a major event.
It's, it's the same thing, Paul, with the Vinyl Square Committee, they want to come in, so I, I just think that's part of, we need to keep, keep our game up as liaisons rather than making all these formal objectives.
Yeah, and just get them in.
That's my view.
And they reach back to you.
Do we want to, do we want to continue anything with the, um, to keep, step up the game with, on the legislative side? I think what we started doing this year is working well, and I know that's also something that can go into the calendar. But is there anything from an objective standpoint that, or is this another, put it on the calendar and see what comes of that and stay ahead of the budget cycles?
I think on the calendar is what makes sense to me.
Okay, I, I'm okay with that, as long as we don't lose sight of it. Paul, what are you thinking of it?
Yeah, no, because it's, because next year, the session's going to end July, end of July, so it's going to be a very busy spring and.
Yeah.
And I think it's.
At the end of our fiscal year, because.
Be tough to get them, yeah.
No, but it's important, because that's where everything's going to happen.
Oh, yeah, before.
Two, it's, it's the end of their two-year s- cycle as heading into the twenty-four election, so there's going to be a lot that we want to be connected to with the list.
So is there a date now that should be on the calendar?
I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be that March timeframe, because that's when they'll be, they'll be producing the budget and, as well as.
That's probably something we should just get on the calendar now.
Yeah, and I think, I think if we make sure that at every meeting, we're setting the next one.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And, and then that, too, also falls into the liaison bucket as well as just making sure we're kind of upping our game on the liaison assignments with them. Is there anything more relative to the CCA, or does that just work into the budgeting and reporting? That one, to me, is a little bit different because we got the earmark to kind of keep it going, but we still have this whole, what is the CCA going to be in the future and how do we implement that strategic plan? And I'm just wondering, maybe, since we have new management there, if we should keep this as a formal select board objective?
Well, I, I mean, in my mind, I had it on the list.
Select board town manager objective.
It's going to be, it's going to be financial stability, because.
Right.
When I produce a budget.
That's how I see it, too.
In January, the CCA's got to be in it, or, or there's no, there's nothing beyond, as you said, beyond the end of this fiscal year.
Right, but, but.
But my plan was to bring Lauren in.
Right.
Probably this fall and give an update to the board, and then maybe a second one around January, and then we say, okay, this is, this is where we're heading, and then this, and, and basically, so I do think CCA, uh, you know, I, I had this CCA permanent funding or CCA stabil, stabil funding, something is.
Because that's one where there's a multi-year strategic plan that was developed, and we, we've barely started to scratch the surface on it, so that's why I'm wondering if we should keep that as a formalized objective, to keep it in front of our noodle, because it is about the financial viability going forward and what, you know, keeping that as a community asset.
I think that's a good idea.
I think, I think it's beyond just making sure Paul budgets for it.
Yeah.
So.
I, I mean, I, I.
I mean, that's fine, we, we could just have it as.
It's brainstorming, I, I would like to.
A CCA plan.
CCA strategy and sustainability or something.
Yeah, exactly.
What do you have, Paul?
Yeah, I'm, I'm waiting in the bullpen, I'm just waiting for, for it to go.
I'm waiting here.
Oh. I'm going to stop for a minute, go ahead.
All right.
I think we got a lot of good stuff up there.
What I'm thinking, let me, let me, with a brief preface, when I'm thinking about what's going to affect this community before the end of this fiscal year, MBTA zoning has got to be on the list.
Yeah.
And I know it's a primary of the planning board.
Yeah, that's fine.
This board, this board has to partner with and coordinate with the planning board. That's going to be the biggest thing that's going to affect this community is the MBTA zoning.
That was part of my list when we were talking about this before, that I, I talked myself out of it.
I took it off.
I, I did, because I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I was afraid that by formalizing it as one of our objectives, we're pushing too hard. I know that we're going to have to support it, but as long as it's, if we keep it, as long as it's worded as a, you know, supporting the planning board, I'm okay.
Because they're coming in the spring.
I just don't want us to run off half-cocked on MBTA.
Right, but I just think we've got, yeah, support the planning board. But I think support the planning board for the MBTA.
It's brainstorming, Paul, we'll put it up there.
No, because I think it's, I just think it's a big, a big thing.
Is there anything, Paul, on, on that, and the reason I talked myself out of it is because I couldn't think of anything specific other than waiting to hear what their proposals are and then to start to work with them on suggestions for, you know, additions, subtractions, revisions, et cetera.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think they've got to put the ball in play, but we've got to be there as they're formulating that, because it has impacts on public safety, on, on schools, on.
Yep.
Okay.
Infrastructure, it has everything.
No.
Yeah, and I think that's why we've got to be.
The state gives you a pretty good piece of that, though, is it, a half of it?
Right, but.
Yeah, they give us, we've got grant funding and it's filling out the plan.
They need to put out what the, what the areas are and what the options are, as far as the different mixes that we can.
And they're going to have public hearings.
Mix one is this, and it's going to generate X and probably Y and Z, and we're going to have to talk about that, and then, you know.
It was already around town this week, and they were going to put fourteen hundred units in the, uh, in Trinity School.
West Campus?
Yeah.
Well, that's interesting.
That keeps going up every week, huh?
That's interesting.
Oh, I'm just saying.
Fourteen hundred?
Well, that's, that's the number that the MBTA is shooting for with each town, right?
At least.
Oh, oh, that's, that's.
I'm assuming that's where they got their numbers. That's serious, I got a call on that today, I said, you out of your mind? I said, right now, they've only been approved over there for what, three hundred and eighty, is that what it is?
Something like that.
Right now, I mean, that could change, but.
And then the next one I have that's going to hit us, and we, we just don't know when and how, it's this emergency sheltering for migrants, the state of emergency.
Homeless.
Homelessness, housing, home, yeah, Pat, Pat and I went to the thing, what, two weeks ago, and, oh, that's coming. We just don't know what form.
Didn't we just get, you're just, you know, a couple of days.
Well, the, the, yeah, we, we.
Holiday Inn, right, or getting a hundred.
Well, the, well, the Best Western, and maybe the Radisson, we don't know. But we know we're going to get, we, well, we don't know, we're, we're expecting that we're going to get impacted, but somehow that's got to be.
So your suggestion is that we have a goal to keep it in front of us, to stay abreast of.
Yeah, and, and in communication with our legislative delegation and everybody, because.
Regarding the housing challenge?
The, the sheltering, yeah, sheltering, homelessness.
Homelessness.
Yeah.
Have a big effect on the police budget.
Police fire, yeah, police fire, schools, you know. I don't know as much we can do about it, but we've got to be, we've got to be on top of it.
Oh, yeah, I know, I mean, we're going to have to.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
I know, I, I talked to, I talked to Jay Lang and.
Yeah.
And, um.
Well, it could help with the chapter seventy.
Dennis King about it this morning.
They already have the, they get the space, they're ready, it's just, I don't know.
So, yeah, I mean, they're concerned about it, I can tell you that.
Who's concerned about the school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In schools, you know, but it's huge, given that we're already in modular classrooms and tight on space.
Yep. The, the next one I, that I have, um, is, do you want an easy one or a ser, a heavy one? Uh, a heavy one, a heavy one is, the rec, we had recreation, parks and recreation, but this is more in terms of recreational courts and fields, you know.
Pickleball?
Well, yeah, that's one, yeah, pickleball, um, the whole issue of the McCarthy, the future of the McCarthy site, even though I know it's under the schools, but, you know.
I thought they gave it back to you now.
What's that?
Didn't it come back?
It's not come back, no.
It kind of just died, didn't it?
Kind of died, at the schools, but, but we're getting, we're getting requests on lining.
Yes.
Pickleball courts, uh, it, it came up at last week's Vinyl Square meeting, that quickly got tabled.
Yeah.
Because the concerns of the impact and noise.
Well, so, but I brought it up to you in the spring, and you had a conversation with Jay Lang about it.
Yeah.
And he said that he was going to bring the group back together to the, to the McCarthy courts, at least, to discuss.
It hasn't, hasn't, hasn't happened.
So as a liaison, can I push that?
Sure.
I, it has, it has occurred to me that maybe I could have that conversation with them, but I don't know.
But the other thing related to this is, is.
Their.
But part of this is getting off of the school property, because one of the problems.
We don't want it there.
The problems with the school property is you can't use them during the school hours.
So that, they want to serve.
And so, for example, they, we, we have, we've had an ongoing request to line the pickleball, line the tennis courts at South Row for pickleball, and they're like, well, that's fine, but you can't use them during the school hours. And they're like, well, yeah, but at least having it after school hours is better than nothing. So I think, and the thought was, and it actually, well, actually, it'll probably come up on Wednesday night at the master plan meeting, is the town's need for additional court and field space, right now, they're heavily concentrated in the schools. Uh, and so I think we should look towards that, whether it's forming a committee, what have you. I mean, the thought, one of the thoughts that I had was, was right out here at Mc, what I call, what I'll call McFarland. For lack of a better term.
Oh, it is, it's called McFarland Field.
McFarland Field, you know, not, not the, you know, the, the, what we call the, the young girls softball field, for lack of a better. At the corner of Wilson and Chelmsford.
Where the new, uh.
For the fitness court, right, right.
Aaron, Aaron, add fields, courts and fields.
But if, I mean, if, if, if you, if there was one spot in town where you could probably put pickleball courts where the noise wouldn't bother anybody, that would be it.
Where the softball field is?
Yes, see, they'll get the.
You mean, replace the softball field with a pickleball court?
Yes.
Well, that equipment kind of took the, the field away.
I mean, but you'd obviously have to replace the softball field, but if you think about it, if the objection to pickleball is the noise, and if you wanted lighting, the one, a, a spot where you could actually do that is back here. Right here, because you wouldn't have the neighbors, the residential, significant residential neighbors.
The old boy.
And, and you could have lighting, and it wouldn't affect anybody, and you have parking, and it's secure.
Kind of matches.
And you already have the fitness court there, so it kind of fits.
So, I mean, you know, think about the, think about the space, size space that's there, that you could put in tennis and pickleball courts.
Well, I know you have new baseball.
Just come up with ideas and not solve them yet.
But you have new baseball fields at Roberts Field, too, right?
Right, exactly.
Aaron, Aaron, just capturing the ideas.
Capturing the idea, um, and cricket was another one, we keep getting.
We don't, you know.
Oh, my God.
That's where fields, that's where pickleball, cricket, field, okay, so that's one. If, if you wanted a light one, since I raised it, was that land par.
Wasn't light?
No.
That wasn't heavy one.
That, that land parcel in the center.
Well, that's mine, too.
Oh, yes, that's mine.
The, the fame, the, the, uh. The, the triangle, the triangle, um.
Oh, what, what the, yeah.
Where Rudy was, the gas station was, yeah, the, you know.
Center square.
What a statue, a statue.
Statue, right. No, but one thought was the, you could plant trees on, and if you put trees, you'd, you'd bring in soil and plant trees, and you wouldn't excavate, but it would look out, it would look a lot better than what's there now, so, yeah.
We got things going on downtown.
Center square parcel.
Yes, thank you.
It would be nice to clean that little spot up.
Oh, yeah.
Have you heard anything now?
No.
What's it, what's that parcel called?
Mobile station.
Does Re- Reiny own a piece of that?
Rudy still, Rudy owns the back part, yeah. Yeah, the, the part that's not owned by Global, you know, Mobile, you know, where the house, the house is that.
Rudy or Reiny?
Rudy, the fellow who owns the service station on, on Littleton Road.
Yeah, if we start kicking around in that triangle, you never know what might pop out of it.
Well, we already started.
Okay, we're already started.
We've already started.
And then if we're on that theme, I think we should build upon the tree planting, that success that we had at the Common. And, and I'll just go, you can just put twenty-one tree planting, I think we should look, two things. One is, it kind of goes to the energy, clean energy and support, because, but it also ties into the tree committee. But I would think, I would look at doing tree planting on North Road, we've talked about this in the past, from the Common to four ninety-five. And then I would also look at North Chelmsford near Middlesex Street, because it's called Urban Forestry or, or, you know, Heat Islands and so forth, and there may be, that's sort of, that's an entitlement community area, and we may be able to get tree planting funds. But I think in general, I think one thing that the community would support would be tree planting, and I, so I would say.
Well, the DPW has like fifty trees coming, National Grid, too, coming their way, so.
Right, yeah, yeah, exactly, we've got funding from National Grid, so I think tree planting, and that kinda, I think, also does the climate change, sustainability, all that. So that was one, um.
Like the ones at Harrington.
Going back to the diversity thing, you know, the diversity committee, new thing, I, I'll add, this one, Aaron's a separate one, and, and I know, this is a tough lift. Diversifying the makeup of town boards, and I would say appointed boards, because we don't control elected boards, I, I just, I think it's something that we all desire, I just don't know how we do it. In terms of, in terms of making, how do we, how do we engage the multiple cultures in the community into our government, and I, I know it's sort of that diversity issue. It's, you know, so I, I, it'd be, it'd be a great.
I mean, it's, it's getting better marginally.
It's getting marginally better, but it would be.
Wouldn't, wouldn't some of that feed back into, like, the civic engagement stuff, and that we're trying to get? Because if we don't, if you don't have the applicants, there's nothing really.
Right, but I just know if there's a.
Like, I'm not gonna turn away applicants, because.
If there's some effort.
Maybe that's a sub bullet under the civic engagement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know?
That's what I, that's what I.
We don't have civic engagement one this time, do we?
Oh, yeah, we didn't write one, did we?
It's on the calendar.
No, we said it's on the calendar. But as part of that, that's, maybe that's what we should be thinking about and having that.
As part of, as part of civic engagement.
Yeah. Do you wanna? Cause that's the only place I can see with that.
I mean, I feel like this is a tough conversation to have in a town that's, like, ninety percent Caucasian, and then what, like, uh?
Yeah, but I, I, I think it really isn't, as much as you think.
But I think that's the reason.
It's not. Right.
But I, you know.
Well, if the boards reflect the town as a whole, right, the percentage, then it's a little bit, yeah. And to Virginia's point, if you don't have enough people to fill up the towns and committees as it is, it's a whole, you know.
Really, it's done really well with that, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's down to less than a page.
Yeah.
Uh. Double polls?
I actually, so, where I stopped on my list was.
You've really gone off the rails.
I, I wrote, Paul, I, mine was bigger. I wrote down, I wrote down utilities, question mark, like, is there something we should be doing, it's not just the double polls, it's, you know, National Grid, clear, clear cutting our conservation land, it's.
I'd, I'd go back and look at the undergrounding question again.
The, the center, the center underground, so is there something around the utilities that we wanna provide increased focus on for those types of things?
I was also thinking about charging stations.
Coordination with the town.
Charging stations, too, yeah, vehicle charging stations.
And that, and it's the charging stations, so.
So just, yeah, I guess twenty-three would be utilities.
So, okay, so utilities is the big bucket.
Yeah. Because if we wanna start pushing people that way.
Poles.
Double, yeah.
Charging stations.
Undergrounding.
Underground.
Underground project.
And what do you call, is it just like the, the, the level of professional coordination with?
National Grid.
This, no, no, with the stakeholders in our community, like.
Yeah.
You know, before you're gonna cut trees down at a conservation area, whether or not you have the right to do it, could you at least speak to somebody about it? Those kind of things, and there's another issue in front of them right now, that, I can't remember which one it was, um.
That wasn't.
I've got two seventy, Bill, that car on my mind.
The PFAS and the soils from the.
No, no, it's a, it's a different one, it's been on the agenda twice now, with National Grids there, and I can't remember which address it is.
No, I think it is two seventy, Burka Road.
No, it's a different agenda, I know.
All right.
I can look it up.
Do you wanna?
I don't know what you call that, though. It's kinda like the, their general relationship with the town. I, what, what is it, Paul? It's, it's nothing our community person got involved with, right?
Right.
I don't think Curtis was part of that.
Right. I don't want to.
Just, uh, maybe just engagement, engagement with town.
Communications.
Yeah.
Community engagement?
Sure.
Communications?
It, it's the engagement with the, with the town and its, it's a, it's boards and commissions.
Yeah.
Somehow, how do we, how do we fix that?
And then the other thing we, we, we should add, given the year, you already got sewer, you got streets, and you got sidewalks, the other one's gotta be drainage and stormwater. If any, you know, I mean, this has been a, this year has highlighted the stormwater drainage issues.
Well, I think some of the sewer implies stormwater, you know, the.
Right, but some of, but some of them are just stormwater challenges in general, in terms of drainage, you know, we've.
I do think that's a sub bullet under the major town.
It's a, it's a big one, yeah, it's a big one, yeah.
Under sewer.
Yeah, it should say sewer and stormwater, maybe.
Yeah, they're, they're, yeah, they're separate, but, but related.
But they, but they're not separate, is the issue.
Right, they're not, right, but, right, in some cases, they are separate, right?
Yeah, in some cases, they are.
Throwing everything out there.
Well, yeah, but see, that's the thing, I mean, too many goals should be things that you normally are not gonna be, have, have some, any, you know, ongoing relationship with, and some things we put up there that's, you know, kind, is things that, that we're always gonna fail, like, last year, we had budgets, and we had tax strategies as goals, I mean, those things we do all the time, and.
I agree, so you want it.
I don't think they should be.
Send them as specific goals.
Well, I, I think, I think that those things wound up on goals, because, like, for budget.
We don't need to, we don't need to.
We don't need to go back, but there was a different way that we wanted to look at them.
I mean, if you want a unique.
Nobody's suggesting we carry those forward again.
Right.
If you wanted discreet action, what, what about the issue of the revising the town motto?
Oh, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's.
I don't think we need, I don't, I don't know who would bring that up, and I don't think, I don't think.
I'm just saying, it's been brought up by the, it's been brought up.
Well, I'm sure it has.
Yeah.
But I don't think we need.
And then, and then the only other thing I noticed on this list, what we don't have any interesting, is nothing on economic development. Or, or housing production. You know.
Well, we have housing.
Oh, we had homelessness.
MBTA.
You have MBTA.
BTA, but.
That's all kind of through the plan, but again, that's like that.
Yeah, and then we're capped out.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, anyway, but, but economic development.
What are you, what are you, what are you gonna do, okay, to Pat's point, what are we gonna do for economic development beyond what we're doing already? And, and also, isn't the, like, last year, growth strategy came up, we decided, well, that's really part of this overall strategic plan thought process, it's not its own little thing. So, what, what would you do specifically, Paul?
We, I mean, we're, I mean, it comes up constantly, usually at the Vinyl Square meetings, about small business development, you know, yeah, how could we help, you know, Chelmsford Hardware comes up, so, you know, those kind of things, like, are there any, any facade programs, are there any things that the town could be doing, or, or even supporting the bi-local, it comes up as well, in terms of, you know, not, in, in terms of, how do you support local businesses in the community, and maybe we do that already with the, with the fairs.
I was gonna say, between Lisa and.
Lisa, okay, maybe it's already there, but I just, I just noticed that when, when I look back at prior years, that, you know, those were heavier.
I mean, has anything?
But again.
We didn't have a business development person.
When, when economic development hit before.
Yeah.
One twenty-nine, you know, we, we had higher vacancy rates and things like that, so, I don't think we're saying it's not important, but.
But, but that's what Lisa was hired for.
It's a major initiative for us.
Well, the other thing, too, is, is anybody on your staff, like Lisa.
Yeah.
Bubbled up, any things that they feel as though we need to engage for goals to support them?
Well, her bubble up to, i- is she wants to revise their website, the one twenty-nine website, because it's, you know, it needs attention, so.
Yeah, but, but that's not for us.
But not for the board, yeah, exactly, but no.
Yeah, right, but that's what, more, what I'm asking, is there something that we need to do differently?
No.
In order to encourage business or economic development.
No, no.
Okay, that's why I'm just.
And I, and I think, too, Pat, like, some of these may fall off, but to your point about, like, what are the major new things, or whatever, last year, what we wound up doing was, we put a bunch of things under, we're gonna track this, we're gonna just keep tracking it.
Yeah, which we do anyway, I mean.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
If you don't wanna lose sight of it, at least, like, that's a way to handle it, without saying it's something we're gonna put a lot of energy into as a new initiative.
Yeah.
But I agree with you, I mean, there's, twenty-four is a lot, so we gotta do something for this.
Yeah, we, we can't go forward with twenty-four, we need, we need one general one, I think, for ongoing, you know, ongoing initiative.
Well, yeah, some of these could be combined, like, the sewer and the, that could all be under, like, infrastructure, right, like, the sewer and the, um, traffic, maybe, like, I don't know, is that all under infrastructure, road sidewalk infrastructure, that could all be under a big infrastructure bucket, right? Like, the tree plantings and the.
The concern I have with, with clumping sewer and roads and sidewalks at this point, under something smaller, is that.
Yeah.
You know, they were, they were front and center last year, um, and we just kind of, so, roads and sidewalks, for example, we had plans and recommendations that were several years old, and we kinda like regrouped and said, "Okay, let's get a master plan together," which she did, Christine and Paul's staff did a really good job putting together. But I'm not sure that it's it, there's still so many major issues out there that that plan is covering. To me, it warrants its own category still, at least for another year, the roads and infrastructure and the sewer, both.
That directly impacts so many.
I don't think those are clumps.
Yeah, that directs, directly impacts so many of the other major bullets that we have up there, so. But I, I can just see a whole bunch of them that could go under another category of just kind of ongoing support.
Yeah, I mean, we have things like the PFAS, the fire station, the Warren Pole.
Um, communication, if you want to, um, process improvements, we could do, do it there.
Yeah. I, I, I'm a little reluctant to do that with process, because I don't think we, it got the attention it should have last year.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm making suggestions.
Yeah.
Um, town website, we could put there.
Yeah.
Parks and Recreation, I suppose we should keep it, cause we didn't get it last time.
I mean, yeah, that one, I think, should stay separate. But like, MBTA zoning support for the planning board, it's really important, but I think it's a tracking type thing, cause we're not gonna step, overstep on that one.
Yeah, that could go. I do, too.
Yeah, stuff that we don't have, like, an action item for.
Yeah, sheltering homeless, is that something that we're gonna be just pulled into? I mean, that, that's gonna, it's kinda gravitational, it's gonna happen, and we're gonna have to.
That, that's, that's a track until something.
Yeah, and then.
It's event driven, right, where we might have to pull it out of tracking.
Right, yeah. Yep.
Some, so maybe we wanna identify, like, utilities.
The diver, the, you know, the diver, the diversity, if we keep it, the town committees, boards, I think that's really part of the calendar civic engagement.
Or maybe we wanna, like, prioritize these around things that actually have actual action items, that we need to kind of do.
Make a suggestion, maybe the types of things that we're talking about going into another bucket.
Right, just take another color.
Just take a different color, and just put a little dot on them or something, so that we can kinda.
Sure, so we said.
So here, number eight, website.
Yeah.
Number, before you mark it, this is what I heard Mark say, number eleven, twelve, and thirteen, PFAS, fire station, and Warren Pole.
Yeah.
Well, fire station and Warren Pole already were there, so.
Right.
And, and PFAS, too, yeah.
Yeah, and then number seventeen and eighteen, MBTA, and sheltering and homeless.
Yeah.
And then, I don't know about number twenty-two, if that's even making the list, or if it's just part of the calendar.
Yeah, I think that's more of a calendar.
So that's an X. So then things.
What about traffic issues, is that?
Just taking that off, twenty-two, should I mark that?
So tr- tr- traffic, Pat, would you be more comfortable with that going back under tracking?
Traffic issues?
I, well, I mean, I would, I mean.
We pull the major ones out, Paul, you're frowning, or?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm not.
I mean, we've got, we've got, we've got kind of a rhythm going down with traffic, with the monthly reporting, and then with what we do on other major issues and.
Thinking we've got a committee. Exactly. We have reporting, then quarterly, we can, we have somebody come in, so I think.
So fourteen would get that marked?
Yeah, I think that can get marked.
About fifteen, I mean, fifteen could be kind of the calendar, kind of, isn't it what you're getting at?
Fifteen, um.
I thought we were gonna give that some extra attention.
I was trying to identify major goals versus minor goals, maybe that's what I was trying to get at, in terms of, a major goal, obviously, would be number two, that, you know, that's, that's a.
Is.
Maybe if you go to the other extreme, and then we sort of see what's left in the middle.
Yeah, do you wanna do the major ones, and I'll mark them red?
Do you want the outward communication to go into that?
Into tracking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put that green.
Which number is it?
Seven.
Yeah, and then if you wanna mark, like, the big, big ones, red.
I think, I think two's got, two's a red one, I mean, two.
Find the middle.
And so's it, so's one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One and two.
Our funds and strategic planner goes are important, right?
Yeah.
Big.
Also, like.
Yeah.
I think three is.
Yeah, three?
Yeah, I think it is, I don't know how it could be.
Everybody agree?
I do, I think we're still.
Yeah, we got huge issues there.
Yeah, I think that one's been lingering for kind of a long time, that's a big.
I mean, ten, ten is, but I think it's kinda going along.
Yeah, ten, ten, I feel like.
I think we got a handle on it.
I do, too, I think ten should go green.
Yeah, I think we got a.
Roads and sidewalks.
Monitoring.
Yeah, because we, we definitely have, we have plans now, and they're prioritized, and we're executing on it, and.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Well, what about CCA? I guess that should probably stay red.
It's not, it's not on the same level as.
I, I don't think it is either.
Somewhere in the middle, maybe?
I think it's a sub.
Yeah, it's a.
I think it's a sub, because it's gonna be a three-year situation to me, because we gave them money, it's gonna take a three-year period of time in order to kinda get an idea.
Well, and it's gonna come up as a budget.
As Virginia used to say, is what we wanna know is whether or not we have to budget for this every year, and what would that look like, and, or do we?
So it's gonna come up as a budget item, I think.
And at what point do we not have to, and, like, how we do, how we do and moving toward that, if it's gonna ever happen?
Yeah, exactly. Is there gonna be an opportunity to do that, cause we've been told there is, we've been told there might be, we've been told there isn't.
So do you think that, are you saying that's the green tracking?
I think so, yeah, because I know we'll put.
Monitor and see what happens, then, uh.
Yeah, we, we don't wanna lose sight of it, but it's not, it's, we're not gonna be.
Is fiscal new? Yeah.
We're, we're gonna be supporting Paul and Lauren, and.
Yes.
But it'll still be on here, somebody won't lose sight, yeah.
It's not going away.
Yeah, I think that's good.
It's gonna get addressed.
So.
So now we're.
We said diversifying makeup of boards, is that gonna go under?
I think we crossed that one off.
Oh, you did?
We want that one off?
Yeah, I, I think we should just add it as a sub bullet.
Leave it off there.
Yeah, that's something that's gonna happen organically, we hope.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yep.
And I think that can also come through with the strategic planning too, we can get some ideas out of that process.
Yep.
What about utilities? Poles, charging stations, underground, I feel like that's a, I feel like that might be a red, I don't know.
I, I think that's a red. I, I think all, all parts of that are red, including.
Yeah, I think that's a red. Well, and we're in the poles right now already, so like.
Right, yeah, but the other stuff, and then even the communication with the, with their, their management team, I think we need to reestablish that because based on our last meeting, they.
That's fine.
And we're getting into it with the double pole conversation, so we might as well just keep the momentum going. I agree.
So the drainage, stormwater, is that gonna somehow get put in with sewer, right?
That goes with sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah, and roads and sidewalks and all.
Yeah.
So.
Well, wait, Paul. Roads and sidewalks is tracking, drainage and storm, sewer is a B.
It goes, it's, yeah, it's, it's red, it goes into three.
Yeah.
But leave it in three.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we say sewer and stormwater, and then we put down the drainage, because they kind of go together. So if it's draining into the sewer, so if it's draining in, you know, washing out areas.
The, the tree plantings, if we're gonna do that at all, is just a tracking, I think.
Yeah, I do too.
Well, I'm kind of monitoring that at a pretty close level anyways with the.
Does that mean we don't need it here at all? You're gonna take care of it?
No, no, I, I, no, but I mean, I, I have, I have pretty good eyes on it, so I think you can make it a monitoring and I'll, yeah, it's.
Okay, monitor. Central square.
And I think that's kind of, that's kind of on the same thing, but that's.
Definitely, it's definitely not a red. It is, if anything, it's.
Yeah, it's not a priority, but it's a monitoring.
Which one?
Central square parcel, you know, the mobile station.
So are we into mediums now?
Is that a medium?
I think that's a green.
I think that's a green.
And I think a lot of it just depends on what kind of progress.
What we can do.
The company, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pushing, I'm trying to push that a little bit.
We don't own it, right?
No, we don't own it.
No.
But it's a transition for that question.
Is whether we should, you know.
Well, or whether we can just like.
Not clear, George. They, they, you know.
It comes up every year.
Does it? Does it come up every year?
More often than every year.
Yeah, but if, if now downtown revitalization continues the way it has been, let's not wait until it's all happening to, you know, try to engage this person to see if we can get it.
Well, so we've engaged recently, so it's going, it's already going. I mean, I've engaged through Paul and him. And the tree committee actually has had some input.
Yeah, but it's more about acquiring.
Let's keep, let's keep going.
Yeah, let's keep going, right.
Let's keep going without solving.
Yeah.
Um, recreation spaces. Quarts, fields, like that's kind of.
Well, I'd like to, so we have two related to recreation.
Parks and Recreation, should we put it under there?
Yeah, we have the open space thing, yeah.
Well, I, I think that, um, parks and recreation was actually something different. It's not a problem to solve, it's to get the information that we do have.
But could we expand it to say, you know, the directory, that, and then also look into other, um, spaces for.
Have a two, the two-part objective.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering if that's.
And is it red or is it another color?
Well, that way you could, you could raise it to me if we could get some more meat under there.
Yeah, maybe we do have a medium, because I think like the policy things can be, can be policies too, I mean, can be mediums.
Four, five and six, yeah.
Can we have a medium color, please?
Sure, um.
How about yellow?
And maybe it's a different.
What color would you ask? How about?
It's orange.
Green, do you wanna do green?
Yeah, green, here you have green.
Should I just do a blue one?
No, yellow.
Blue is already up there. It's all, all the words are in blue.
Orange, orange will show up.
Orange is good. You can see it.
Okay, orange.
Orange is kind of close to red.
Is that too close to red?
Yeah.
Okay, so yellow. So Parks and Recreation is gonna go yellow and I'm gonna add.
They're gonna combine it.
Or just make these both yellow, okay?
Make them both yellow, for now, and then we'll figure out if.
And then we can consolidate them?
If we, everyone wants.
Oh, yellow looks good, right? Is that good?
Yeah, it's good enough.
It looks okay.
Good enough.
Although I feel like the high priority one should have been green and the low priorities red, but it's too late to go back.
Yeah, and then four, four, five.
Four, five and.
Four and five, yellow?
I would say yellow, yeah.
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 Policies.
How about process improvement, also yellow?
Yellow.
Yellow.
I feel like that's a good one, but it is kind of, it's an ongoing.
And the only one remaining is fifteen, right?
Clean energy.
And I think that's a yellow.
Yellow.
Clean energy.
Fifteen.
Well, with the, yeah.
Yeah.
And with the new electrical supply, getting that opt-in program up and running will be.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, right.
Will be kind of front and center, so that's gonna be good.
Correct.
Well.
So we have four and, four in the red category, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, four reds and.
And then one, two, three, four, five, six yellows.
Five yellows.
Yellow.
Five.
Six yellows.
Oh, actually five, because aren't we gonna combine the?
Cause that's six. Yeah, we're gonna combine two, so five. Yeah, it'll be under ten, that's, that's good.
Oh, okay. That's enough.
Yeah.
And then.
That's what they're going.
On.
Stuff that we don't lose sight of.
Yeah.
Is that about standard? I don't know what you.
That's a little bit less than last year, yeah.
This which is good?
No, it is good. We, we need to.
Too many last year.
And so how do we wanna move forward on this with regard to, you know, starting to set some dates? Do you wanna me to put this, just put it together? And then come back and we can throw some dates at this?
Yeah, because that was very helpful, like which quarter of the year, whatever we do, that was very helpful.
If you, so like, just, if you can set it up and leave the dates blank, then we can verify we have the goals written the way we want them when you clean it up.
Yep. Yep.
And we can just put dates to it.
I'll take it, I'll take it and just put something together.
Great.
And that we, and we, of course, we also want a little column for ownership.
You should also take pictures of.
Who's assigned to, yeah.
Oh, I know how to do this, don't worry.
You shouldn't, you should also take pictures of those and give them to Christina for the record.
Okay.
And then, and the only other column we had was how measured. That was, that's a big, that's a big.
I'll probably just take pictures and she can have those.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
And, and you do your ownership. Do we, will we discuss ownership?
Who assigned, who they're assigned to?
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, it'll be ownership.
Yeah.
And timing.
And then how they're measured.
Yep.
If you can.
How do we know we're done?
That was a big, that's.
Yeah. We'll just add that to the twenty-first.
There you go. You have it ready for Monday, right, right, Mark?
Oh, for the twenty-first?
Yeah.
Of September, yeah.
So that means we're gonna have a meeting.
This, this will be no problem.
Yeah.
So you wanna, you, you want this on the agenda for Monday?
I don't know if we're gonna be able to put it on the agenda.
No, no.
No, no, not for this Monday, no.
But it'll be ready.
This Monday?
No, we don't.
You have to have it done in two days.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna have.
No, but I think probably September eleventh.
Can you share it with us via email and?
Absolutely, that way you can start doing the markups and.
The best thing to do is take, take photos.
Yeah, like if we have feedback.
No, you cannot give him feedback.
No, 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 you can have your markups. That's why I'm worried about saying anything to anybody, because I don't want some discussion to start online.
But we have to do the feedback in the.
In the meeting.
Right, yeah.
All right, good.
Okay. Thanks, Erin, for doing that.
Yeah, good work.
You did a good job.
Nice.
We need someone to talk to.
Do you want me to take these down and?
No, we wanna take photos, we wanna take photos of it.
Okay, my pictures, then. We can go from there. So let's see. Okay.
Make a motion that we accept, we, we approve the regular meeting minutes for July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It says four and I'm abstaining. Four, oh, one. Okay, next.
You do.
Announcement of determination of releaseability of executive session minutes, minutes for release, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Take a motion?
There's no motion.
Is there? Oh, oh, that's just a release, I'm sorry. Minutes now for release, July, July tenth, twenty twenty-three, segment one, sorry. Yeah, I guess I'll take a motion.
To adjourn.
Adjourn, and make that motion.
A second.
Seven thirty.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five, zero, we are adjourned.
Seven thirty-four.